And pledge to the flag of our great nation.
Let's go to the Lord in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful sunny day and the numerous blessings you provide for us each day. Lord, please bless our military while they're away defending this great nation. And Lord, protect them from harm's way and return them safely to their families and loved ones. And Lord, please bless all of our county employees, from first responders to EMS to sheriff and deputies, that they provide the services to help make Green County a better place to work and live. And Lord, we ask a special prayer for our former sheriff, Lenny Smith, and we wish him a speedy recovery. And dear God, we look to you to guide us in the business presented to the commissioners here and to provide us with the knowledge and wisdom to make the best decisions for all the citizens of Green County. And Lord, we ask all these things in your holiness. Amen.
Amen.
Please join us, Luke, our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. You may be seated. Fellow commissioners, you have a proposed agenda for tonight's meeting. Is there a need for any change to the proposed agenda?
There are no changes, Mr. Chairman. I move to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
I have a second. I have a motion and a second. Need a further discussion. Here are none of those in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The motion is carried unanimously. Our first item for public information, I believe Ms. Joey Brock has something she'd like to bring before us.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right. So actually I had to call and just give you a brief update and share some good news with everybody. The Health Department was awarded our reaccreditation with honors on Friday at the accreditation board meeting in Raleigh. This is the second time the Health Department has been awarded reaccreditation with honors. We had our initial accreditation in 2010, and then we were re-accredited in 2014, and then re-accredited with honors in 2018. So they didn't implement the reaccreditation with honor status until the fall of 2017, and basically it was just to recognize health departments that excelled in their accreditation activities. So you have to miss one or none in each of the five standards. And those standards are assessment, policy development, assurance, facilities, administrative services, and governance. And so we had our site visit on October 10th of this year. Our site visit team, which is four members, it's retired or active health director, retired or active public health nurse, current or retired board of health member, and an environmental health that's still current in their registration. So they gave us compliments on our agency's leadership team, our staff, our board of health, our partnerships, our in-house billing, our recent renovations that we did to the clinic, the lobby, and the front desk area, and our response to COVID-19. So in accreditation, there's 147 benchmarks in those five standards, and we met 143 of those. Within those 147, there's like 800 pieces of evidence that we have to gather and submit. So everything's gone through a dashboard. The site visit team reviews it, and then they come on site for one day and go over anything else, personnel records, anything else that we need to talk about. So it's a lot of work. It's not just that one day. It's a whole process, years of collecting data, putting it in the dashboard. We start the process usually about three months before they come on site. So the team has worked really hard to pull all that together. Normally accreditation lasts four years. This go-around it lasted six because of COVID. So there was a two-year window that they gave us. So this accreditation status will last four years, so we'll go back through it in 2028. I'm gonna let you guys know.
I do have one question. The reaccreditation was 2010, 2014, 2018. I think it skipped six years to 2024.
Because of COVID.
Because of COVID. Okay. That was my curiosity.
We should've gone through in 2022, but we were in the middle of COVID. So they gave everybody two years. So it was actually six years' worth of everything we were collecting instead of four.
Okay. Thank you. Good job. Thank you for the job you do. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. The other information that's in the public information portion is just sent to four public information. There are no presentations. So we have a consent agenda. Do we have a need for any changes for the consent agenda?
There are no changes, Mr. Chairman. I move to approve the consent agenda for tonight's meeting.
Have a motion to approve and a second to approve the consent agenda. Need a further discussion. Here are none of those in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The motion is carried. We have no one for public comments tonight. We'll give it to our first presentation, Mr. Trey Cash.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, sir.
At the last meeting, we presented the draft personnel policy changes. This is in fact for the new General Assembly state law that they passed where it prohibits local governments from allowing point of origin to be viewed on networks and then how we report that to the states. So we have sent those changes out to staff. We presented those to the commissioners. We have no feedback from either one. So tonight I'm just asking for formal approval.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion and a second for approval and a further discussion.
I have one question. I'm just trying to understand how this fits in our economic development process. Is there any reason why our human resource director's not presenting changes to the policy?
Yes, great question. So with other jobs designed, I look after all the IT for the county. This is essentially an IT portion of our cybersecurity assessment. So we have to make sure that all our IT contractors, of which I directly work with, are understand and we implement these on all our servers. So while our human resource officer is great, he's helped us with this and drafted this with getting Kyle ourselves, this essentially is an IT issue.
So if we have a question about this in future, we can use human resources.
Well, human resources handles the personnel policy, of course, but with the IT part, yes, you can come in.
Any further discussion? Here are none of those in favor of the motion of approval signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The motion is carried unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Cash. Mr. County Manager.
Thank you, sir. I have one item of your attention this evening. It is a request for a budget amendment to add the EMS 3 and the new sheriff's office to the second half of our preventative maintenance contract with HeatMont. I believe the costs are in the memo. Looks like $1,896 and $1,388 respectively for six months. These will be added into the budget for the next fiscal year. Just trying to make sure that we maintain the equipment that is new to us for the future.
Is this a yearly thing for six months?
This is for six months. We'll annualize them at the budget term.
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Have a motion and a second for approval. Need a further discussion. Here are none of those in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The motion is carried. Madam County Attorney.
No comments.
No curls of Wednesday County Attorney tonight. Under Commissioner Reports and Recommendations, I'd like to ramble just a few minutes. Some of you may or may not remember, 24 years ago, December the 4th, we had a snowstorm and ice. And county government didn't work on that Monday the 4th, Tuesday the 5th, or Wednesday the 6th. But on Pearl Harbor Day, we had a commissioner meeting. And that night, Commissioner Shackelford was sworn in, he was sworn at, sworn in as a county commissioner, and has served on this board since that time. And at this time, I would just make a few comments that Commissioner Shackelford has always served with honor and integrity. He's been a team player on this board. We've had a lot of discussions. Things always don't go agrable with everyone, but he always approached issues based on the research he had, and he always made his decisions that he thought was in the best interest of this county. He worked with the board even when times that we may not have all agreed. He nevertheless was professional in his execution of his service to the citizens and did himself proud. So at that time, if you would stand up, sir. Resolution of Green County Board of Commissioners, resolution of appreciation honoring Commissioners James T. Shackelford, Jr. Whereas Commissioner James T. Shackelford, Jr. has dedicated 24 years of public service to the Green County Board of Commissioners, serving from 2000 to 2024. And whereas Commissioner Shackelford worked closely with fellow commissioners, county staff, and community members to address challenges and find solutions that advance Green County's growth and development. And whereas, his leadership required making tough decisions that balanced immediate needs with plans for a brighter future, always keeping the well-being of Green County residents at his top priority. And whereas Commissioner Shackelford has shown that progress comes through collaboration by listening to diverse perspectives, building consensus, and ensuring that decisions reflected the needs of the entire community. And whereas his years of public service have helped improve the quality of life in Green County, creating new opportunities and leaving a positive lasting impact on the county and its citizens. Now therefore be it resolved by the Green County Board of Commissioners, that Commissioner James T. Shackelford, Jr. is hereby committed for his 24 years of exemplary service to Green County. The board expresses its profound appreciation for his leadership, integrity, and commitment to public service. This resolution will be recorded in the official minutes of the Green County Board of Commissioners as well as a permanent expression of gratitude. Adopted this the 18th day of November, 2024. Commissioner Shackelford, congratulations and thank you. Thank you so much. If you would like to get a, did you get a photo?
Yeah, y'all, we get together, we'll get a picture.
Okay. And secondly. Y'all, if you want to get this first, this picture first, come on. I'll tell you what, hold it together, and then we'll get the guys around us, and we'll give you a pause, get that one, and we'll hold it together. Ever have, what looks natural? There you go.
Y'all get it tight. Gary.
Good deal.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. And now, secondly, let me, for those who may or may not be aware, and most of us are aware, Commissioner Shackelford served as chairman of the board and has served as vice chairman quite a few times. So I have a plaque with a gavel for Commissioner Shackelford that says James T. Shackelford, Jr. I used to tease him a lot and call him James Theophilus. Tatis Thomas, I believe, isn't it? But I called him Theophilus, but anyhow. Commissioner Honoring James T. Shackelford, Jr., Green County Commissioner, 2000 through 2024. In honor of 24 years of outstanding service, dedicated leadership, and unwavering commitment to Green County. Commissioner Shackelford's contributions have strengthened our community and will be remembered for generations to come. Once again, my brother, congratulations. Thank you. You have 30 minutes to say all you got to say.
Well, I would just like to say that 24 years, a long time. And I came on this board to serve the community, not myself, not no personal person. I came here to look after the whole community. And I can say I had no, had no problem with, no commissioners, no changeover whatsoever ever. I treated them with respect and dignity. And that's me, and I will always be that way. I don't let no individual change me. And I have enjoyed working with you guys. It will be a long time memory in my mind, what we tried to do and what we didn't do and all of that. Things haven't always gone the way I wanted, but it didn't keep me from doing what my duty was as a county commissioner. And I took it as you don't have to like a person to do your job. But I haven't seen anybody that had been on this board that I disliked. And if people don't like me, they still proud. But I have always taken that, and I have no regrets of my time serving on this board. And I want to treat everybody with respect. I have gone on this board with no animosity against anybody, no bitterness with anybody, no hatred against anybody. And Bobby, I wish you good luck. And the thing that I regret the most is that this county do not have any black representation on this board. And for some reason, that was done, and I don't know why, but I don't have no regrets because I put my heart into everything and every day to make this kind of better, you know, for everybody. And I try to share some I wouldn't with people, but they don't understand. If they live like another, they will. So, but I would just, and finally, I would just like to say that I enjoyed it. I had no regrets for the decision that I had made to help this county. And anything in the future that I can do to help this county, I'm here, and I will always work toward helping improve in Green County, where people, especially young people, they need so much help out here. And that will be one of my main goals is trying to get the younger people to see what they need to do to improve the lives of young folks. They are lost. And some of those that I talked to to try to get them to understand, they are lost too, but they are fine out there. You know, we don't know what we don't know. Nobody. And there's one thing that I have learned from my mother and father. They had always told me, said, "Look, you obey your parents." You know, they have been in the shoes that you already been. So your whole head, my momma used to say, "Your whole head gonna make you have a soul," you know what? And I had taken that with me, and I tried to give that advice to my children because your parents are the ones that should be trying to tell you what's right and give them good leadership. And you have a generation of people out here now, I don't know where they're going. You know, I said, "You know, Lord, have mercy on them." But it's not their fault. It's not the young folks' fault to be in the thinking mood that they are in. And if we don't change what we are doing with our young people, what kind of future this world gonna be? I mean, y'all look at what kind of future our young people gonna have? And that stays on my mind, and I will always continue to do what I think is right to help the community and face with the young people because the future is theirs. And right now, so many of them are lost. And I enjoy working with everybody in this county. And so who knows what the future holds? I am 81 years old. God have blessed me. I can do on my own. I can work every day, and I probably could outrun some of you younger guys right now. I know I can outwork you. But I just hope that the Lord keep blessing me, that I can do some more good things as long as I stay on this earth. And I thank y'all.
And I too would like to welcome Bobby Taylor here tonight. Congratulations. I congratulate you the other day, and congratulations. We look forward to working together on the board also. It's the future. Thank you for being here. Any other Commissioner comments or recommendations? I would like to say one more thing. Don't know the, I don't know what the next step is, but our Green Central football team did win against Midway the other night, something like 49 to 6. So we are in the playoffs, and we did win our first game of the playoffs, and so we are progressing, and I'm proud of our football team. Our baseball team did well. I think our soccer team may be at the state championship level, and so I'm proud of our soccer team. Our girls tennis, 32nd consecutive year they've been conference champs. There is a state record for our girls tennis. They hold a record in the state for the longest tenure of contiguous championships. So athleticism obviously is an important thing in Green County. Bob's tennis racket club out there, I mean, things are, things are busy in Green County with athleticism, and that's a good thing. Would also like to recognize that the Board of Commissioners has purchased bikes again this year for our DSS, for our kids in the DSS group. So we do this every year, and as you can see, we have bikes up here that James T. Mike could ride, but I guarantee you I couldn't. They're too small. I don't think my legs would fit well, as decrepit as they are on those little bikes, you know? But Ray Johnson could probably cut a shine on them. Lord have mercy. Any other Commissioner comments or recommendations?
I have a couple people that are testing and disagreeing about the trice audit. They apparently don't understand what we look for. They're all like, try, better get Trey or somebody to post on a Facebook page about the trice audit. Now, I know Ray's put in a lot of effort and getting more cleaned up. I think that, I think just a general need for the audit, you know, to help people understand that we're, the only other thing to have is, you know, when we discussed at our budget workshop, I mentioned Nor County has a software that they use to explain to the public about their budget process. It's easier to read. And, you know, we have six months before our next budget workshop, so I want to counter remind staff, you know, I would like looking at that software that they're using to see if we make it, if our budget can be a bit more transparent.
So I have. Okay. I don't want to miss one of the missions, sit aside.
What did he say about what?
Trash. Just gonna make a comment, and this has nothing to do with politics or that sort of thing. We have been so blessed in the flatlands of eastern North Carolina with the tropical systems that we have not had. And Kyle and I had breakfast with a gentleman from Hayward County Friday morning.
Tommy Long.
Tommy Long. And Tommy had, has, he had 300 head of cattle. He has most of them still, I think, but he had stored all the food for the winter time. It all got flooded, got destroyed, every bit of it. He can't even get to his cows without walking. He cannot drive to the cows. He's got to walk his cows across the next mountain top and get them in a valley on the other side to be able to get to them, to service his cows. I say these things to say that God has richly blessed all of us. We're very fortunate, and in my way of thinking, when God blesses us, we need to be in the mindset of blessing others and helping others. When we, when we had flood and other events, they've helped us, and a lot of us have helped the folks in the mountains. But thinking about this month, thinking about another 10 days, it's Thanksgiving Day. Give Thanksgiving to God for what you have and what he has done for you because without him, we would, we would not have anything. We would be nothing. And that's just the way I feel. It's on my heart, and I wanted to say it. So y'all forgive me if it offended anybody. It's just the way I feel.
There are certain citizens that carried hay.
Yeah.
To Hayward County, or carried to Raleigh, and from Raleigh they took it to Hayward County.
Yes.
And there's a extension meeting in the morning. We're gonna probably talk about it and maybe try to get some more in there.
I believe Tommy, I believe Tommy told Kyle and I that there are six peaks in Hayward County that's 14,000 feet high.
I think he said 6,000.
6,000. Maybe it was 14 or 6,000.
That sounds right.
Okay, 14 or 6,000 feet, the most peaks of any county east of the Rockies. That's what it was telling us. Give thanks. That's all I'm gonna say. Any other Commissioner comments or recommendations before we go into closed session?
Since you mentioned Tommy Long and his cows, I just wanted to make a topic comment. This has not happened during a hurricane or flood, but he previously has a bunch of cows, it's never had a vacant building, or it used to be a house long time ago. Well, every time a storm comes up and then his cow gets on top of the roof of the building. I don't know how they get it. I don't know if they grow up the stairs or not, but they end up on top of the roof.
Oh, wow.
Do I have a motion to begin the closed session for attorney-client privilege to discuss closed session pursuant to the provision set forth of NCGS 143-318-117-A-3.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
And, and economic development. Have a motion and a second. Need a further discussion. Here are none of those in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The motion is carried. We are going into closed session. The motion is carried. We are going into closed session.